And then education awareness, we are interacting with students, those who are on campus, used to be on campus. They used to come with me for surveys and documentation. This year due to COVID nineteen, this is a nice part which we had started as an online sessions where experts like you can. They need not travel all the way, though we would like you to be with us on the campus, but at least we could have you on online session to talk with. And even we interact with our security guards, our housekeeping maids, so other staffs. And so that way they are also helping us for documentation, especially our security guards. They are doing a fantastic job and the last and very important is a conservation where we are trying to. Protect and do and help management not to disturb habitats we which we have selected or identified as. Eco sensitive zone or biodiversity hotspots. So those these three pillars we are working on right now. Slowly we want to start or take our work outside of our campus means nearby villages or. Get other people also involved in a way of other students, other colleges, other universities, but slowly. As Nirmal always said, one step at a time. So it's slowly going on. So that's that's it and. Now, those who are here, though Piyu will introduce to you, I just want to tell you one thing that. Aditi, when three, four years back, we spoke and I got to know that she is she is a recipient of. Young green, green warrior, youngest green warrior award and that too from symbasis university. I was so much, so much, it was such a surprise and. And now today you are with us. So I'm very, very excited to also have you with us. And to look forward to your session that is sustainable tribal tales. This is a first ever session on this subject. And everything now the platform is all yours. We are looking forward to your talk. So Piyu, you can go ahead.
Hello everyone, my name is Piyush Swastava and I welcome you all on the behalf of the biodiversity cell of symbasis international university. We are really glad that you could join us. Our session today is about sustainable travel tales, which will be presented by our guest speaker, Aditi Murli Dhar. She is the scientific officer with the Hoomi Baba Centre for Science Education, TIFR Mumbai. Her primary training is in zoology with specialization in environmental sciences. She has also been working in the area of education for the last decade and her research interests span environment education, socio culture issues and science and technology. Design education and she has published numerous articles on children's stories and research communications on nature. And she also runs a blog which is called by the name of early notes. She is also, as told by ma'am, she has also been the recipient of the young green warrior award from symbasis international university in two thousand nine. So with that note, I would like to hand it over to Aditi ma'am.
Thank you so much, Piyu and Shilpa. So am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, great. So. Thanks, Shilpa, Viden, Piyu, Arshdeep and the entire biodiversity center inviting me to be part of the initiative. And I agree with Shilpa, I wish it could have been an offline thing where I could have interacted with you to have been more organic and dynamic. But I think the mode of our times is virtual, so this is the way forward. What I'm ideally, you know, I would ideally prefer that you actually stop me anytime and ask me questions, but this online mode there's always a lag. And then that creativity sort of breaks. So maybe we can have some discussion and interactions towards the end if that's okay. And I also really want to hear from all of you on this topic because you know all of us travel and we have our own stories to share. So let me just start my screen share at this. And if at any point I am not audible, please just interrupt me right.
Yes.
That I'm not audible.
Yes, yes, right now you are loud and clear.
And my presentation is visible?
Yes.
Okay, great. So today I'm going to talk about sustainable travel tales, which basically is a small bunch of stories from my time traveling in India. And they actually just a compilation of some group ups that I've made or something that I've learned. And I'm sharing it with you in the hope that maybe you know you have something to share as well. And maybe we can exchange notes on this because given that you're all part of the biodiversity cell and as Shilpa mentioned, conservation and awareness are. Two of your focus areas, we are always looking at ways in which we can do something for the environment. And often enough, we find this quite an overwhelming issue. We don't know where exactly to start. And so this talk will focus largely on those really small actionable steps that we can take. Very tangible in the sense that all of us might have experienced this at some point or the other and how is it that you can make your small bit of contribution? It will also be largely in the context of India, the talk and places within India. So there might be something that might not be relevant in certain places. Might be relevant in other places. Also, right at the beginning, I want to say that it's not that. You know, you have to do these ten things and you're a sustainable traveler traveler kind of a thing. These are points that you know you ponder over, you try it out, you see what works for you, what doesn't work for you. Some of these things are non-negotiable, some of these things are things that you can try to work towards. So let's start with you know where this whole thing started and what basically this when I mean travel, what kind of thing am I talking about? So travel could be anything from the time that you know you might be traveling to work every day or it could be where you will be go to our hometown to visit our family. Or it could be for many of us, you know, we go for a holiday with our friends or we want to just relax, rewind for a creation, you know, connect with nature, culture. Or we are, you know, adventure seeking, you know, we want to try and do something new, explore something new. So travel could mean a lot of things to a lot of people. And my entire thought around this whole sustainability and travel started, you know, because over the last couple of years when I used to travel for. My workplace, I used to travel by the Mumbai local trains and you know I spent about three hours in tracking of which about an hour and a half was spent on the local trains. And if any of you, I mean, most of you might already know that the Mumbai local trains are, you know, they fly about six to seven million passengers a day. And this is a site that I remember seeing during peak hour, you know, it was around ten o'clock, the trains were every every three minutes apart. And there were these two men employed by the railways to pick up trash on the railway platform, on the tracks, sorry. And that was something that really, you know, pinched me really hard saying that. It's because of commuters like us that such a hazardous job has been created in the first place. You know, every two minutes, there's a train passing by and they are on the tracks picking up trash. So this sort of led to a whole lot of experiences, you know, in train where we have had fights saying that kachra mat ke ko ke ko. And then I had had this entire argument with this lady who said she's throwing organic trash, so it doesn't matter. You know, it's just. This is nothing, this is biodegradable. So I was thinking, oh, it's six million people sent that on Mumbai local every day and threw it out on the track, we'll probably be, you know, having tracks covered with food. But this sort of set the ball rolling and you know, I was thinking about these things. And there were also other these small experiences that I had. So for example, this photo is from Lonavla. And the Pune cars and Mumbai cars, this is like the, you know, picnic spot for all college birds and all of that. And I had gone with my friends and. You know, it was monsoon, it was beautiful, we were on top of this cliff and we had this amazing view. And that caught my eye, you know, those white specks there and I was like, are those flowers or no, is that mushroom or I will keep looking at it, looking at it and then I had my binoculars with me. And much to my shock and disappointment, those were all thermocall plates, which was left by a bunch of picnickers and. That again got me thinking on these lines that we go to these places to enjoy for recreation, to be close to nature. But then there are also these other things that we either choose to avoid or you know are trying to be ignorant of. And so you know, I started thinking about this whole idea of what is it to travel sustainably and maybe what could I do as a person who's traveling? What kind of steps could I take or how can I ensure that I don't contribute that to that particular mess? So to start off with, I will take what is the textbook definition of the sustainable tourism and though I'm not going to stick by that, I just want to pick out some points from it. Which I'll use later in the presentation. So a sustainable approach to tourism means that neither the natural environment nor the socio cultural fabric of the host communities will be impaired by the arrival of the tourist. So if I'm going to a place, it's not that I have to only ensure that I don't, you mess the environment there or you're not disturb nature there. But we also should have to ensure that the local people who live there are not harmed by our presence there. And in fact, it goes one step further by saying that ideally it should even benefit the local communities and even there should be economical as well as cultural benefit that comes out of the idea of tourism. So we looked at what could this mean and what could such actions, you know, mean? So let's, in order to sort of take us through, I was thought like, you know, really good idea to make sense of how can we sort of categorize tourists? And I want to, you know, put it out right there that it doesn't matter what kind of tourist you are, but all of us at some point are responsible for unsustainable practices. So you know, just to make things easier, this is just a very topical way to categorize tourists, but you know, one way would say that, you know, mass tourists, you know, just. Tour agency. Forty fifty people or we go for a picnic and you know, an entire class or a school goes on a bus. So you know, large numbers basically. Or it could also be pilgrim routes where you have a particular route that is very famous and you have hundreds and thousands of visitors on that route during a specific season. So I would put this largely under mass tourists. Elite tourists, I would say are among the fewer among. Indians is like even a very small population who might be considered as, you know, elite tourists who might go to very, very high end villas or resorts. And then you also have adventure seekers, explorers, alternate travelers who might want, who might be into camping, trekking and you know those kind of things. So it doesn't matter what kind of tourist you are, but the thing is that at all points we do find that there are some unsustainable practices associated with it. So for example, this particular photo is from Tonak and this is just this December, right, this January, in fact, January twenty twenty one. So because twenty twenty was a really bad year for tourism, what happened was that when the lockdown sort of opened. Tourism, you know, it just boomed in the last two months, you know, November, December, January, people were able to travel. And even in peak December, the Tonak Trail, this is a very famous pilgrim route, was filled with hundreds and hundreds of tourists and pilgrims. But what caught my attention in this entire route was from the point of entry till the time that you reach the main area. The whole place had a lot of trash, so much trash, so much trash that in fact, you know, this picture doesn't do justice to what I'm trying to show because. It's morning light, so you can't actually see the plastic in it, but the entire route was filled with plastic. So this is one location where you know there was a pit, so the plastic was sort of aggregated in one place. But this is what that caught caught my attention. So this is where I say mass tourists can often lead to, you know, such large scale littering and, you know, destruction of habitat. Then you come to something like even that might be considered what I was talking about elite tourism where you know, you might have this very high end resorts where you know, if you spend one. Night there, you have to pay off the order of twenty thirty grand and you know, if you have everything picture perfect, very picturesque located in, you know. The backdrop of nature and what they call eco cartridges. But then the question is, does that mean they're sustainable or is that or should you be asking some other questions? So for example, in this particular place, this was made in a water starved area. So then you need to question that why is there a swimming pool in a water scarce area? Is that a sustainable practice? Where is the water source coming from? All the trash that is generated here, where does it go? So on the outside, it might seem that this is a very pretty picture, but we don't know what's happening behind the scenes and at so every point we need to be questioning that as a tourist. Then you also have campers and trekkers who are into, you know, mountaineering, they want to go camp camping, but then there are some sort of unsustainable practices there as well. So this is this article that I read that in a mountain, there is just filled with trash and human feces, which is against. Very disgusting to hear, but then it is the tourists that are contributing to that kind of mess. You know, typically what happens in camping even and in India at least, that if you're going for a ten day trek. You carry all the food items that you need for the ten days with you and it's an answered rule that as you keep going higher and higher. You keep discarding the food packets at the respective campsite. It's not that you actually get it back down. So you can imagine that even in this picture that there is so many cans and other plastic that is deposited on these mountains and these are very fragile habitats. So all kinds of tourists have some sort of forms where you know, there are unsustainable practices which either have for the environment or the local culture. So now let's look at some ways in which we can probably do our bit. The first thing is, where can I start? And the most common thing is reducing your carbon footprint by reducing air travel. Now again, in the Indian context, it is definitely that Indians don't travel by air as much as say other people in developed countries. But this is definitely one very, very big way to reduce your carbon footprint because it's one of the most carbon intensive forms of travel. Alternatively, you can also always go for train travel or public transport. Now, keeping that aside, there are other things that we can pay attention to. And one thing that at least I have been trying to follow in most places is always carry your trash with you all the time. And this might seem insane, but if you think about it, you might start, you know, thinking that maybe there is some sense to it. So for example, this photo you see is in Shidui Hills in Manipur. It's not a very famous place in terms of tourism, but it is famous because you know there are these bear reliefs that grow there and you know, during a specific time tourists come there. And if you see the route, it's so picture perfect, there's absolutely almost no kachra on the route. And what I found most amazing was that there were these dustbins placed every few hundred feet, which is really exciting because they had thought about. The fact that you know, there'll be tourists on this route and they might need to discard trash and so they provided bins. But now look at the habitat again here, you know, you're almost in eye line with the clouds there, you can see the clouds and the wind is blowing. One heavy gust of wind and the bin tumbles and the entire contents of the bin are flying all over the sky. So then it makes me think that I did my job as a traveler, I put the kachra into the bin, but then actually am I still doing the right thing? Like I know where that went. So that's why I have this rule that I set for myself that I carry my trash with me all the way. Until a point you have, you know, community bin where a lot of trash gets accumulated. So that pristine areas like this can remain as they are. There's also one thing, maybe you can go one step further, which is if possible, leave it even cleaner. Now again, as I mentioned that these are not like things that you have to do, but these are things that you can think about and if you have a group of friends who are like minded. These are small things that you can, you know, have a clean up drive, say when you go to one of these hills or go for a short hike. This happened to us like in Meenam Wildlife Sanctuary in Sikkim. So Meenam is one of these places where you can see the red panda. And we had about a four or five hours to ourselves to explore the forest and we had gotten a. Non-peak season, I mean, it was not even a tourist season, it was December and we were the only tourists there, we were just three, four people along with the local guide. The forest was so beautiful, it was so quiet and the only thing that was catching my attention was this strange pieces of plastic on the way. So what we did is that we went uphill, we finished the hike and then we were coming downhill, we picked up the plastic that was there on the way and started filling it with all the other trash that we found. So in fact, we see that finally when we left the place, we left it at least three bags cleaner, three bags filled with plastic cleaner and you know, we felt maybe okay. We didn't see the red panda, but. And you feel motivated to do this mainly because this these places are not like the city where the place is completely filled with kachra. There is already so much greenery and cleanliness there that you almost feel that, oh, just needs that pretty more effort and you know, it can be done. Small tip on cleaning drives and all that, always do it when you're going downhill. Don't go do it when you're uphill, headed uphill and so that you have to carry less weight on the easier route. So this is another thing you can think about. Special shout out to paying attention to plastics and menstrual trash. So when we're traveling, these are two things that are absolutely non-biodegradable and they harm the environment to a great deal. To just take an example, this was at Tonavli beach in Cocon. It was, it's near Kankavli and you know, we stayed at this outhouse of a local person and he had this beautiful outhouse just. On the beach and it was so windy, it was so beautiful and it was neat and clean and there was this bin right outside our. This house. But then again, it got me thinking that if I still do my duty and put this kachra in the bin, where does it go? And what happened is if you actually go behind the house, you find that the trash has been accumulated, but then the dogs had, you know. Knocked down all the bins and it was a big mess and beaches are windy. So the entire trash was thrown around. And specifically also, if you notice menstrual trash is something that you find. They might be discarded in such places, but these have a very harmful effect on the environment, especially they're also considered as medical based. So one has to make sure that they are disposed responsibly. And that's why, you know, carrying your trash back and disposing it responsibly is a very important thing when it comes specifically to menstrual trash. There are alternatives to using sanitary pads and tampons like menstrual cups, but it can be a hassle during travel, but we can talk about that later if any of you have any questions. But these are things to think about. Now, I've been talking about trash, trash, trash the whole time. So what is it that we can do actually even to prevent this trash when we are traveling? Kachra to hovey. So what are ways in which that we can actually prevent this trash from even being produced? And so these are small things that you can keep in mind is that the number one thing that we tend to buy when we are out is bottled water. And you know, like this is very famous code that says that package drinking water companies only produce plastic bottles, not water. So that is something we have to keep in mind because every time we buy a bottle of water, it takes us just a minute to gulp it all down and. After that, what happens to the bottle is something that we don't pay attention to. So you know, I remember this one trip in Rajasthan. We both five adults and one kid and it was just a two and a half day trip and it was near Talchapur area. There were not many hotels there, so this hotel guide told us that. Pani ke liye bottled water lele. I was like, no, no, bottled water nahi chahiye, sada pani chahiye. Ne ne, idhar pani acha nahi hai. And I was like, okay, I gave in and I regretted it two days later. Because two days later, we five adults and one kid had finished thirty six bottles of water because it was really hot, it was Rajasthan. And there was so much guilt associated with the fact that we finished so much bottles of water and. That, you know, haunted me for quite a while, but what happened is five years later, I went to the same place, the same hotel and the guy again said. Apko pani ka bottle lena padhenge. I was like, ne, par aap kya pike ho, aap bhi package pani pike ho gaya. Is like, ki hum log idhar ka pani pi lete hai. So I said, hum bhi wain pani pi lenge. Ne ne, wo khara hai, wo basically, he meant it's hard water, it won't suit you guys. So I said, it's okay, take the risk and basically all that I had to do was coax him that much. And there was this kitchen behind with an aqua garden, they were filling the water into a mug cup. And we were filling our bottles there for three days and we didn't buy even a single bottled water. So it was just that one tiny effort, you know, to say no and say that, you know, insist on a certain thing that can make the difference. Similarly, you know, as much as possible, when you're traveling, try to avoid packaged foods, but if you are, then try to carry the cash trash pack with you. And one thing you should notice also, when you go to a remote locations in India. If you are a local, you get served chai in a glass cup. But if you're a tourist and obviously we. Dig jate ki hum log tourist hai, you get served in a disposable cup. Because the locals have been told by tourists that they feel that the glass cups are not hygienic enough. So the default behavior of most chai vendors will be that they'll give you a disposable cup. So this is something you can keep in mind that when you're trying to go to chai tap, please try and always go for ones who are serving you in reusables. And I don't think it even is that much of a hassle to carry your own butlerie that, you know, if you're a chai person like me or something. So basically, it's making the small minute decisions, planning your trip out, you know, if you're stopping by a roadside dhaba. Are they serving it in a thermocall plate or are they serving it in a steel plate? These are the small things that you can keep in the back of your mind when you're traveling and you know, you're having this outdoor experience. Now, this was related to, you know, trash, garbage and those kind of things. Now let's come to another very important part of sustainability is about how it's very important to respect the flora and fauna of the region that you are visiting. You know, as they say, always leave only footprints, nothing else when you go to a place, leave the habitats as they are, not to disturb the wildlife. And you know, you will see on the left side, actually the picture that I've put is of a rusty cheat skimmer or babble that we saw in Uttarakhand. Again, just in January and it was so strange that we actually had this one area where we went bird watching in trash. To bhaapar itne saare birds aate hai and then you know, it makes you feel that is that a good thing or a bad thing because they're actually altering the way the wildlife actually forages and feeds. But this is how you'll find certain places are, you know, when you go birding in the north. So some things again, keeping in mind when you're outdoors, when you're camping, follow hygienic camping protocols. So you know, for example, this particular amazing campsite was in Great Himalayan National Park. And obviously, when you are in such winters, there aren't going to be any facilities for toilets or washrooms or any of that. So it's all out there in the open. Now the problem is again, when you're out there, nobody tells you these things, right? These are all like. Where will you go to the washroom, which areas will you do? But each of our such decisions actually has a huge impact on the nature. So for example, you should never, you know, when you're headed to bathroom, you should never go near water sources, you should always go downhill. So these are things that we picked up from the locals, you know, and you have to let go that hashas aside and ask them when you are at a camping location like this, that you know, where do we go for bath? They'll give you specific locations because the way that the locals have sort of figured out this areas, they know which are the drinking water sources. You're not supposed to go in the wrong direction and you know, create a mess of the whole thing because this water then goes down to the villages below, right? So these are things that we are not aware of, we don't know which water source goes there. So these are things that you have to keep in mind, follow these very hygienic camping protocols. And you think, ye utna serious baat nahi hai, but it is because it will affect you at some point. I remember that, you know, we were planning this trip in Sikkim and it's a very famous trek called the Yuxun Zongri Goichala Trek. And one of the notes that we were reading up online was that this particular trek, you know, it's not advisable to drink water from the water bodies, natural water bodies. Because of a waterborne disease that one can get. So this particular situation happened because of unhygienic practices by campers. And you know, this is how it again leads to environmental practices that are not very sustainable in nature. So these are tips that you can keep in mind. The second thing is not to go off-roading. You know, in our times, off-roading seems to be a very cool thing to do. You know, ladakh gaye ya kidar di gaye, gadi leke gaye, bike leke gaye, you know, you go on these un-treaded roads and you know, try and explore the landscapes. It sounds nice, but in general, what happens is that there are a lot of micro habitats in places that are less treadable. So for example, this picture is from Ladakh, right? And on the right side, on this very plain looking background, you find that this, we were doing this one trek and this lady from the Chanka tribe. She was alone in this lonely hilly area, alone with five hundred pashmina goats and she, she showed us this and this was almost invisible. It's a pair of eggs of the Ashi crown sparrowla and it was invisible, like absolutely invisible. She had not shown us that we would have just walked right past it. And there are so many such hundreds of wildlife that actually thrive on these grounds which seem, which seem seemingly like, you know, not alive, it just seems like mud. There were toad, headed lizards and so many other eggs and birds and chicks are in that area. So off-roading is something that is not suggested in places where the road is not paka. So if, if, basically if you don't have a paka road and you have a kacha road, go on routes where already you see tire tracks. Because it, then you are more likely not to trample upon these small micro habitats. So this is one thing. Then there is also for me, you know, go see wildlife and all that, we all like to go on safaris. So this is Eid National Park and Eid is very famous for, of course, the Asiatic lion. So this is Ghid National Park and Ghid is very famous for cause the Asiatic Lion is the only place in India where. You will see the Asiatic Lion. So the problem, what we noticed was that it took a lot of convincing for our guide. And for our driver to tell them that we were interested in seeing birds as well. So what happened is that, and this is true for all national parks in India, you know, if you go to any tiger reserve. There is a strong insistence on the tourist part to wanting to see these tigers and lions. So there's a very strong pressure for them to deliver. You know, you miss all the birds, all the other mammals, it's fine, but it's for tiger. And this kind of culture has actually come because the tourists have put that pressure on them. So there is this focus that me lion. And just to quote an example of how this can in turn have this uh. Uh lead to this other problem is uh this particular uh news article that you see that. Uh there was this illegal show that was happening in Ghid. Essentially, what the locals would do is they would bait. Uh the lion, it when they knew that the lion was in a particular area, they'll bait it, they'll put some fresh meat there. The lion will come there and then they will take the tourists there so that they can get shots. So this was exposed as a big uh you know, illegal thing that was happening there. But then you have to again question yourself as a tourist that who put who in that situation? You know, we have the choice to not force uh the people to say that, you know, take, show us a tiger, show us a. Lion. So this is again something I really want you all to think about and you know. See that how is it that as tourists, we cannot create that pressure on local communities to sort of deliver and. You know, always remember the hospitality industry works this way, you know, they there is this excessive need for people to deliver to the clients who come there, so. What is it that we can do to sort of reduce that pressure is something we need to think about. Uh and lastly, you know, when you're observing nature, there is this excitement in trying to observe nature as it is. So you know, for example, let me just show you this one video. What was saw there actually was uh. What's the alarm call of a spotted deer? And this is something that typically, you know, if you go to a safari, you might see that. Because you might not see the tiger or the leopard, but uh the animals around pick up on these, they're. Always trying to uh figure out where are the predators and there are so many other things to observe in nature. So this is what I said that. Ninety percent of the times it will be a letdown. So for example, after this alarm call, we saw leopard nor a tiger. It just, nothing happened. So but that's how nature is. Nature is such that there's an element of chance, you might see something or you might not see something. And this is mystery. So you know, when such a call comes, we are like, oh, is there a predator? Now are we being watched? That is the excitement with which you should actually be observing nature and not with this agenda. So that that onus is definitely on us and you know that's something we should think of. Uh you know, as tourists that we should not be putting that pressure on people. There comes this aspect of ethical photography, you know, and I know Shilpa was telling me that a lot of you are interested in photography. And it's a very integral part of you know wildlife observation, you know. But uh here is one very important part again about being a sustainable tourist. Now this is a picture of the seal on frog move that we clicked in Kerala. And uh it's uh so these birds are absolutely cryptic, you just cannot sight these birds unless there is a local guide. Who has figured out the location of these birds. So when we were there, it just so happened that there were these local uh guys who had said they had spotted one location. Of the bird. So in case for those of you who have uh not figured it out yet, that this is the bird. So there's a pair of the frog mouths that are there. What uh instantly you found is that the guides had this next square, they would figure out the location and then bring tourists there, which is fine. But what uh was that it was located in such a foliage that ultimately if you now look at the picture, that there is a clearing just around the boat. And here is where the whole idea of ethical photography comes because. Right now you have put the pretty picture, the need of wanting a pretty picture ahead of safeguarding the species itself. This bird thrives on the fact that it has this cryptic coloration and it can camouflage itself so well. And just because the tourists need to have a good photograph of it or a good locate it. You notice that how the foliage around has been disturbed and that's where the whole idea of you know. Following very ethical practices when you're doing wildlife photography comes into play and this is a very important part of. You know, being a sustainable tourist, uh especially in terms of wildlife because you're actually directly interfering with the ecology of the bird. For any other end for that matter. So this is another thing that one needs to keep in mind. And like I mentioned before, that you know, much of the fascination around observing nature is the fact that. You know, you're patient about it and sometimes you get rewarded. Like there was this time in Ladakh, you see here where a group of uh blue sheep. Uh they were foraging right above us and they usually are very shy animals, they don't come very close. We sat for about forty-five minutes and these blue sheep came so close, so close. Finally they came, they were almost ten feet away from us. And there is this thrill in knowing that, you know, the wildlife have sort of seen you. They don't see you as a threat and they're comfortable doing their own thing around you. And we got some amazing shots and you know, they were so close and it was so exciting to actually observe nature that way. Again, a quick point, now just because I got my photo, it doesn't mean that you have to now quickly get up, chalo photo ho gaya and get up and go because they will spook the animals. You have to again wait for half an hour till they move away from you so that you can slowly into your way back. So it basically all these things are asked for a lot of patience and uh. Require you to spend your time there, but it's definitely rewarding and it's a part of uh you know, sustainable practices around tourism. Uh I will now go to the last part of the talk which says that. We should be definitely looking at nature, but uh there's also this aspect of. How we should also support and respect the local people, culture and traditions. This is something that often is not considered as under the ambit of tourism because uh it. I don't know, maybe it slips our mind or uh we maybe don't think about it deep enough, it's a possibility, but. Here are just some quick examples of, you know, how is it that local lifestyle does get affected by tourism? So uh a quick example, uh there is this. So I'm particularly wanting to take an example from Ladakh. Where traditionally, there has been a practice of uh something uh called dry toilets there. Yeah, so this is what is a dry toilet. So in Ladakh, the temperatures uh can be anywhere between minus thirty degrees to plus thirty degrees Celsius, right? So locally, they have figured out a great way of how toilets work. Uh the construction is as how you can see on the left, the toilet will be a top compartment and there'll be a big pit downwards. And uh inside of a toilet is what you see on the picture on the right, it's just basically a hole. And then there'll be some sawdust, ash or agricultural waste there. This is, it might seem very uh basic, but this is actually a fantastic way in which the local people. Have figured out what works in their area. Now, a typical water-based toilet will not work in Ladakh. Because what happens in winter is water freezes, the pipes will crack and the entire plumbing goes for a toss. So they have historically never had that typical water-based toilet, so they've always had this dry toilets there. And what is even awesome is that once uh a toilet is considered uh filled with capacity, they close the toilet, they open a new toilet. They let this degrade over time and after six months, it's one of the best compost and manure that they have, which they use in their fields. So they have this own system where you know, they use, they recycle human waste and use it as manure for their agriculture and it's something that has worked great. But what has happened is all by because of tourism, the tourism has put a great demand of water-based toilets in the region. And this has caused a lot of problem for local people there. So that's what I mean by eroding local cultures. Because this is something, for example, it's not, it's not intentional, but it happened. Like for example, the homestead that we were staying at, the lady of the house actually did not want to take money from us. Because she didn't have water-based toilets in her house. So that was the embarrassment with which she uh held herself to just because she didn't have a water-based toilet. Uh at her place. So this is again something we need to be thinking about and you know, strangely, we spoke to a lot of experts. Uh in Ladakh and even locals and they told us that the demand for water-based toilets actually comes from Indian tourists and not foreign tourists. So uh it is a little strange that you know uh this demand is coming more. From uh Indian tourists, given that we should be accepting that there are varieties of ways and different cultures people have across the country. So this is just one example I wanted to take. But uh another thing about supporting and respecting local people is also supporting local economies. So instead of uh booking a room with a bigger hotel, uh you can offer homestays because you know that. That income is going directly to the livelihood, supporting livelihoods of people. And you know, there are very interesting networks that you'll find in North India across the Himalayas, so even uh for that matter in Ladakh here. They have this really nice system, you know, so this is inside Hemis National Park and they had this system where if there are like ten houses, right? Everyone gets a turn once. So for example, now I came there as a tourist, I landed up, I was hiking, I landed up there. Jiska vo time pe turn raha, they only have to host. Nobody gets to do double round or you know. So this particular house was the village head and it so happened that it was his turn. So it's not that the village chair head will now get a second turn if it's it's a big group or something like that, no. It has to go in order, everyone gets a chance, everyone gets to host the tourists. So they have this system in place. And the money goes directly into their pockets and which they use to safeguard the local environment there. So uh homestay, staying in homestays is something definitely that will support local uh you know culture. And because we got to stay in a homestay, we also got this insight into what a traditional Ladakh kitchen looks like and. You know, you actually get to uh live in the house of people with their family and there's so much one can learn in you know this aspect, so. Uh you're not cut away from or you're not experiencing the same thing that you might experience in the city in a beautiful place elsewhere, but rather you're actually. Getting a local flavor of what that place is all about. Uh the other thing is also, we always want to take away souvenirs for our friends, so instead of buying. You know, keychains from the airport or something, again you'll find that there's always a lot of uh souvenirs that the locals themselves make, so. For example, Ladakh women, they uh are always, you'll see a lot of them collecting this uh wool that is lined. Everywhere on the ground, they spin it into a yarn and they make these really awesome snow leopard toys and all the flagship species uh species of that region. So it's, these are what I would call as more local souvenirs and buying this sort of contributes to their livelihoods. So this again is an aspect of sustainability where you're supporting local culture. Uh the other thing uh maybe not so relevant and maybe not so possible for everybody is also uh. In an attempt to trying to understand uh local culture and traditions, you also indulge in local cuisine. Uh it might not be possible for all because we might have our subjective tastes and other issues, but. After a certain point, you need to think that you have Maggie. So there's always this excitement to try and uh see what is it that you can uh try different in that area locally sourced, locally. Grown food. So for example, you know, it was uh December, it's Uttarakhand and this is their typical food. Where they have sarsuki sabji with desi ghee, mandwa rotis, mandwa is a type of uh millet. And bhankira ki chutney. So uh it's like you're getting a literally the flavor of what the local life is all about. And lastly, I mean, the things that I want to add towards the end is that when we tend to go to places. There is always this sort of uh invisible divide you see among locals and tourists. Because as I mentioned, the hospitality industry is probably like that. But uh we must understand that there are very many different ways of living. And it's not that a city life is any superior to something that uh is uh you know superior over a village life or something like that. And often enough, you would find during your conversations that uh this comes across. Uh among local people that they feel that they are uh not. In your side of the world or they're not experiencing something in the city which they ought to be. So that's something, you know, I generally keep in mind that don't try to glamorize the shehaka culture because we have to accept that we are living in a land of diversity and there is no. Uh big or small between, I know, different ways of living. And it's important that we speak to people, gain perspectives, learn about local lives. Try to understand what their their expectations uh might be of us. And be sensitive and considerate to their context also. You know, an example that I wanted to give you was in um Great Himalayan National Park, it's a national park, so it's protected by all the legal laws that they are. But we got to know that uh you know, in the dead of the night, many locals actually go into the park and then. Start collecting these herbs, what we say jadi bhoti, uh Himalayan herbs, you know. They collect these herbs and it's illegal to do that. And the forest department have patrolling groups who uh you know, try and catch these people and all of that. So at one point, you're like, are they, why are they doing this? They should not do this. But then on the other hand, you should also be asking yourself, why are they doing it? Are there not enough opportunities for livelihood here? Is tourism not uh you know giving them that option? So we have to be sensitive and considerate to their context and uh not start the blame game when it comes to. You know, especially protected areas. There should be two sides of everything and you should spend time as a tourist trying to understand that as well. And yes, over here also you have the aspect of ethical photography. You know, just as some, I would not like to be photographed in the middle of Mumbai city just because someone is a photographer. You shouldn't assume that just because you're from the city and you're out there to photograph uh the local people, you can, you know, take people's photographs without their consent. Because uh often they are uncomfortable with their picture taken, so this is something that you have to respect. And you know, take a permission before you click photographs of there. So uh with this, you know, I sort of uh would like to end with the. What is the bigger picture that you are trying to say that sustainability is not just about. Trying to keep the environment clean and you know, trying to safeguard wildlife, but also ensuring that the local communities. Or the host communities uh are also safeguarded and in fact benefited. And as a tourist, one of the important things is that you need to do a little research before you go to your uh the place that you choose. Where is it you're camping? Who is the one organizing it? How do we manage our trash? You know, if we're going to be having periods, how do we manage that? What kind of uh? How do we tackle that issue or how, what kind of arrangements can I make? Where can I carry the trash? Uh you know, if you are going from uh one place to the other on a highway, where do we stop? Uh where, you know, will there be a restroom there? Will there be uh the disposable cutlery or? So these are things that you keep in the ma- back of your mind, it can definitely make your entire traveling experience very sustainable. And I will stop right here and you know, I'm leaving my uh details, contact details for you. And I would really like to now hear from all of you as well because I know you're all into wildlife and you've been traveling and you might have these. Thoughts or experiences that uh. Share and you know, for example, you have some.
Thanks, thanks, Aditi.